Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners regular meeting of August 25th, 2025 to order. Proof of publication is available. And we'll begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Legions. Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone again, and thank you for attending our meeting this evening. I am President Jennifer Karen, and I'm joined this evening by Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Ballone, Commissioner Brown, and Vice President Nagy. Our first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from our regular meeting of July 28th, 2025.
Madam President, no objections. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 28th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Vice President Nagy. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, at this time, we'll turn to our presentations. The first item of action is the resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we will turn to the resolution. Would you like me to read it, Director Hall, into the minutes first?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Resolution 2025 R-36, Appointing Tori Shiley to the rank of Corporal in the Lower Allen Township Police Department, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township desires to promote an officer to the rank of Corporal in the Lower Allen Township Police Department, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, whereas the Board of Commissioners makes this appointment according to the rules and regulations of the Civil Service Commission of Lower Allen Township. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners do hereby appoint Tori M. Shiley to the rank of Corporal in the Lower Allen Township Police Department effective August 25th, 2025. Further, that this promotion is subject to satisfactory completion of a probationary period of not less than one year. And with that, the motion is on the table. Or the motion needs to be made to adopt the resolution that's on the table.
Madam President, I would be happy to make a motion to approve and adopt Resolution 2025 R-35 as you just described.
I think it's R-36.
Excuse me, R-36.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, and a Commissioner Ballone.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ballone, and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Director Hall for the promotion ceremony.
Thank you, Madam President and Commissioners. Good evening. Welcome to today's promotional ceremony honoring Officer Tori Shiley in his promotion to the rank of Corporal with the Lower Allen Township Police Department. We're very pleased to have Magisterial District Judge Delosier here this evening to perform the oath of office. And before we begin, please allow me to extend a special welcome to Officer Shiley's family, his wife Leah is with us, his children Owen and Addison, his mother Carol Ann, and his stepfather Jay, and the rest of the extended family, friends, and colleagues with us to the front rows here. So I have the honor of this evening to provide a brief introduction to everybody of Officer Shiley. He was originally from Fairview Township before moving to Lower Allen Township with his family in 2009. He graduated from Cedar Cliff High School that year, and went on to get his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from HAC in 2012. He was hired by the Lower Allen Township in 2013 as a Community Service Officer, and then hired as a police officer in 2015, and attended the Police Academy later that year. During his career with Lower Allen Township Police Department, Officer Shiley has served as a Field Training Officer, as an OIC, and he's received numerous awards throughout his career to include multiple-unit citations and life-saving awards, a certificate of recognition from Harrisburg City PD for assisting the city during the 2020 riots, and a Meritorious Service Award for his actions in assisting New Cumberland Borough PD during a shooting incident in 2019. At this time, I would ask Officer Shiley and Judge Delosier to come forward, and Judge Delosier to administer the Corporal's oath of office to Officer Shiley.
Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I am Tori Shiley.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the laws and constitution of this Commonwealth
The laws and constitutions of this Commonwealth.
and the ordinances of Lower Allen Township
The ordinances of Lower Allen Township.
and I will discharge the office of my duties
And I will discharge the office of my duties.
with fidelity
With fidelity.
and without consideration
Without consideration.
to a person's race
To a person's race.
sex
Sex.
religious creed
Religious creed.
sexual orientation
Sexual orientation.
age
Age.
national ancestry
National ancestry.
handicap
Handicap.
or disability
Or disability.
as a police corporal with Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County.
At this time, I would ask Tori's wife Leah to come forward to pin the new Corporal rank collar insignia, and Captain Fols to come forward to issue the Corporal Shiley as Corporal's badge following the pinning. Well, the pinning is taking place. Just want to make a note that bars have been popular symbols in our and other military services' uniforms at least as far back as the Romans. And corporals wear double stripes on their uniform sleeves as well as the pin. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming Corporal Tori Shiley to the ranks of Lower Allen Township. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the ceremony. I think you're going to exit and take some photographs.
Well, congratulations to the Corporal again, and thanks to his family for coming this evening. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll turn to the next portion of our agenda, which is for audience participation. Give him a minute. Proud of their dad. At this time, we would ask that if any item on the agenda or any business pertinent to the township, if an audience member would like to participate, we do ask that all attendees sign in, and those speaking must state their name and address for the record. And we do kindly ask that you try to limit your discussions to five minutes per person. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to discuss either an item on the agenda or something pertinent to the township? And if so, if you could just raise your hand to let us know which item that is, or which topic that is. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is the time where any Commissioner staff member or anyone in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion can request. So now, is there a request for removal of any items on the consent agenda?
Madam President, no objection. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, the next item is Resolution 2025 R-37, which authorizes the disposition of specific records in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual.
Madam President, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-R-37, authorizing disposition of specific records in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual.
Oh, my apologies. That was an item on the consent agenda.
Oh, it was.
I flipped the page incorrectly. So that was already adopted by way of the consent agenda. So thank you for bringing that up to my attention.
I withdraw my motion.
I saw it at the top of the page. It threw me off. Okay, so we'll move on to the items under the President, and the first item is to accept a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 R-38, recognizing, commending, and honoring Mary Ellen Banks, Recording Secretary, on her retirement. And at this time, I would ask if Mary Ellen would come forward so we can read the resolution into the minutes. Okay, so this is Resolution 2025 R-38, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, recognizing, commending, and honoring Mary Ellen Banks, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township desires to express its recognition and gratitude for more than sixteen years of service provided by Mary Ellen, and whereas Mary Ellen joined Lower Allen Township in 2009 as a Recording Secretary in the Administration Department. And whereas Mary Ellen has recorded and transcribed official minutes for numerous Development Authority meetings and other meetings where she served as a substitute in a timely and accurate manner, and whereas Mary Ellen is recognized by staff and citizens alike for her community involvement, and whereas Mary Ellen has declared her intent to retire with her last meeting being August 18th, 2025. And now hereby resolve that sincere gratitude and appreciation be and are hereby extended to Mary Ellen Banks for more than sixteen years of dedicated service to the citizens of Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County, and that this recognition be spread upon the minutes and records of Lower Allen Township for perpetuity. With this? Did we get a vote on it yet, did we? No. So we'll vote on it first. But congratulations, and we'll take action on the resolution here in a minute, so. So we'll just stay here.
Madam President, I would be with regrets, but I'm happy for Mary Ellen and her decision at this point, and wish you well. But with regrets, Mary Ellen, Madam President, I would make a motion to pass Resolution 2025 R-39 in terms of Mary Ellen's retirement.
Second, with regret, but many thanks.
Yes, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero, and thank you again for all of your years of service. Okay, well, thanks again to Mary Ellen. Congratulations on your retirement, and you will be missed, so thank you. Okay, the next item is to accept a motion to approve a manual check register of August 21st, 2025, in the amount of $125 to Eckert Seaman Sharon, a lot for legal services.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ballone, a second from Vice President Nagy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with that, I'll also add my abstention to the voting due to the fact that that is a payment to my law firm, so the motion carries four to zero with one abstention. The next section is the Human Resources, and with that, I'll turn it over to Director Crone.
Thank you, Madam President. First item on the list is discussion of possible action approving a pay rate adjustment for Connor Thetka, EMT in EMS Department, effective August 13th of 2025. You have a memo outlining that, and his original rate, and the reason for the bump.
Okay, thank you. So we have a possible action to approve the pay rate.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the pay rate adjustment for Connor Thetka, EMT in the EMS Department, effective August 13th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Vice President Nagy. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, the next item?
Next item for discussion of possible action, Resolution 2025 R-39, approving, moving Andrew Ellenberger from Seasonal Parks Maintenance Specialist to Full-Time Maintenance Specialist One with the pay rate adjustment commensurate to that position. It's a budgeted position and a current vacancy. He passed the litmus test of working seasonal, and Public Works is very happy with him and would love to bring him on full-time.
Great, great, thank you.
Make a motion, Madam President, to approve Resolution 2025-R-39?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Nagy, a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, five to zero.
And the final item under HR, approving a standalone school crossing guard job description. This was separated out from the Community Service Officer job description. A lot of irrelevant things in there for a school crossing guard, so it was thought best to have it as a standalone job description.
Okay. Any questions on this for Director Crone?
I make a motion to approve the standalone school crossing guard job description.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, thank you, Director Crone.
Thank you, Madam President.
Next is Public Safety with Director Hall.
Madam President, Item Nine on the agenda, Discussion of Possible Action, Authorizing Staff to Advertise Ordinance 2025-03, Amending and Modifying and Changing the Lower Allen Township Code, Chapter 151, Parks and Playgrounds by Implementing Smoking Prohibitions and Increased Enforcement for Violations. The memo in your folder explains that you requested staff to take a look at prohibitions for smoking. Solicitor Minor provided Section One of the ordinance, the revision text included in the board package for this meeting, and the changes were then reviewed by Manager Davis and myself. They read that "The areas of parks, playgrounds, and recreational areas in Lower Allen Township shall be designated smoke-free, and the use of any tobacco or other smoking product in any form shall be prohibited." The term "smoke-free" included tobacco and other smoking products. That could include things like marijuana vaping or other substances in the forms of smoking through inhalation of the products. Section Two B would provide penalties to include any person who violates or permits a violation more than three times of this chapter. Upon conviction in a summary proceeding under Pennsylvania's Rules of Criminal Procedure, in addition to criminal penalties, may also receive a punishment of expulsion from the township parks, playgrounds, or recreational areas, and be not allowed back on those properties. So the revisions are proposed at a board for discussion and possible approval to advertise.
Okay, thank you, Director Hall. Are there any questions for him regarding this motion to advertise?
I do, Madam President. I have one small suggested revision. I would suggest inserting the word "products" after the word "tobacco" in Section One. I think that the way that this reads currently, it's...I know that it's not the intent to limit the application to only smokable tobacco products, but the way that it reads to me currently, it sounds that way. And I think that specifying the use of any tobacco product or other smoking products would accomplish the intent without...while removing any ambiguity, if that makes sense. Because the defined term is tobacco product, but...
Yeah, I think that makes...I think that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any comments to that suggestion?
Madam President, I just have a question regarding procedure here. I guess it'd be aimed at the solicitor. Is this because...is this the tax amendment, or will we also be...will setting a date for any sort of hearing be necessary?
No, this is legislation, so no hearing. You can enact. At this point, I put the notice for your meeting of September 22nd to get adequate public notice, but there wouldn't be any hearing necessary. So you could enact that night if you wish.
In September would be the earliest time.
And I think we could probably make an earlier meeting, but I just...with publication deadlines, the second meeting is just easier.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, I will make the motion to advertise Ordinance 2025-03 with Commissioner Schwartz's recommended changes.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Vice President Nagy, a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any other questions or comments on this motion to advertise? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you, Director Hall.
Thank you.
Director Sweeney, Community and Economic Development. The first item is a zoning hearing board update.
Thank you, Madam President. The zoning hearing board update relative to 1713 Humwell Avenue, we met with the applicant and his counsel, let them know what they needed to do. They have not yet resubmitted their revised application, so likely this will be a continuance to the October 16th zoning hearing board meeting. That's where we stand right now.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any questions on that update? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move to the next item for the ordinance advertisement.
Thank you. The second item is authorizing staff to advertise ordinance number 2025-04, amending, modifying, and changing the Lower Allen Township Code, Chapter 40, Planning Commission to authorize the appointment of two alternate members. In your packets, you have the sample ordinance to be advertised. As I previously indicated, the reason for this was to continue to keep the seven members. We were having an issue with a quorum. This will allow two alternate members, and reducing that quorum to three instead of four. I will note that I spoke with the planning commission, and I had two very happy volunteers to volunteer quickly for those alternate members. So we have our volunteers right now at this point for the alternate members.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we have an action item for advertising this ordinance.
Madam President, I move that we authorize staff to advertise ordinance 2025-04, amending, modifying, and changing the Lower Allen Township Code, Chapter 40, Planning Commission to authorize the appointment of alternate members.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Ballone. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, your next item?
Thank you. And the last item is discussion of SLD Number 2025-03. This is the Wawa Store Number 8256 Preliminary Final Land Development Plan. This Wawa is to be located at 920th Century Drive. And at this time, I will turn it over to the development team for their presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Boarding Commissioners.
Good evening.
Throw the aerial up. Be a good place to start. Okay, I am Eric Clayce from Gilmore Associates. I'm here representing Provco/Wawa for a site located at Century Drive in Wesley. There we go. Wesley, Century's on two sides of the property. It's within the C2 zoning district. I am also here with the Traffic Engineer, TPD, Jason Wheeler, their attorney from McNeel Law, Peter Wertz, and from Provco, Chuck Coker. They're all sitting in the audience if you need anything from them. Again, this property is within the C2 zoning district. It's approximately 2.35 acres. This is the existing site. You see on the screen, it's an existing office building with a parking lot. Now, what we're proposing, I'll switch it. Bear with me, touchscreen. There we go. All right. It's approximately a 6,000-square-foot Wawa. There we propose 50 parking spaces. We did receive a special exception from the zoning hearing board for that number previously. There are eight fueling stations with 16 pumps on the site, on the southern side of the site, the Wesley side. We have three access points. If you're coming in to this property from Century Drive from Wesley, you have a right in. Further to the north, you have a full access. Sure, absolutely. Sure, absolutely. Losing it. All right. The right-in is right there, coming from the intersection of Wesley and Century. Going further north, we have a full access drive along Century. Then if you make the right along Century, we have another full access drive to the northeast of the property. Other than that, we have review letters from the township professionals. It's all will comply at this point. It's a very small list. It's dotting the i's and crossing the t's. We do have a short list of requested modifications which are waivers that I could go through, but I wanted to make sure, are there any questions that you have, or the overall project before we go through that list? All good? All right, great. Okay. The first modification is from Section one ninety-two dash thirty-five, capital A, two. It's to consider the plan as preliminary slash final. That's a modification, so that's the first waiver. The second one is for street trees. Now I'm going to go through this one. This is Section one ninety-five dot fifty-eight, C-five, A. The reason we cannot meet this is because along the western property line, along Century Drive, there is a gas easement that Buckeye owns. That easement goes right up to our parking spaces. They will not allow us to put trees within their easement. We do meet the ordinance on the rest of the property. The third waiver is from Section one ninety-two fifty-eight E-ten for planting beds. Your ordinance requires planting beds to be utilized for stormwater management. What we propose is using curbing with inlets to capture the stormwater management and pipe it. The next waiver is from Section one ninety-two fifty-nine, C-two. It's parking space size. When you have the planting beds being utilized for stormwater management, the ordinance requires the last space to be one foot extra. The parking space requirements in the ordinance are nine feet. We're proposing ten feet for all spaces. So all of our spaces are one foot wider than the ordinance requirement. The last modification is from Ordinance Section one eighty-four fourteen A-one, and it has to do with volume control. We didn't have infiltration on the site, so we did a slow release. It's the MRC approach DEP allows, so we meet all regulations by DEP. But your ordinance, we would need a modification to propose what DEP approves. And that would be the conclusion of what I have for you tonight. You're welcome.
Regarding the, I have a couple, and I'll just ask one now, and if it doesn't get covered, I'll come back to it. But the one I have is regarding the trees early and the waivers.
Sure.
So I understand the need to, you know, to ask for the waiver because of the restriction. I've always been of the mindset that we have them in the ordinance for, you know, cover and aesthetically perhaps, and block some, maybe some noise, be some barrier, but also for green, you know, a little bit of green. I'm just wondering, the rest of what you're proposing on the lot, is it, do you have some things to maybe make up some of that green space at all where trees, you know, would be? And I'm just, I'm just asking because, you know, we've had a tradition here of making sure that, you know, we cover our bases with that. So I'm just curious to know if you did a little extra in the back.
We're going to pull up the landscape.
How do I click to the next sheet? How do the arrow?
We haven't. Is it one of these?
No, it's in the full set, but I can just click to it real quick. Oh, there's... I can't read that. Okay, I went back too far. Sorry about that. Okay. No, I kept clicking forward and back. Okay. And how do you zoom even? Yeah, so this shows all the plantings and the environments over there.
All right. The quick answer is we do show a lot of landscaping along where we can plant it, along Century and Wesley. If what you're looking for is us to take the street trees that are required along Century and make them a little bit stacked closer, we can look at that. We just don't want them too close because the root systems start to compete, but we could take a look at that. If you, as a condition of approval, we could take a look to see how dense we could make them.
Yeah, and so my question's coming more from a practical standpoint of something wasn't missed. I trust staff's judgment on this and management's judgment, you know, where there'd be compensations. I just felt I wanted to ask the question because, you know, I believe it's important, and if it can be done, and if it doesn't hinder anything else, I think it would be worthwhile, is my comment for that.
Yeah, I think we'll work with the staff, and if we could get them a little closer together, we'll do that. You said you had multiple questions?
I'm going to go ahead, and if the commissioners have other questions, I'll come back, because they might just ask them.
A question regarding waiver C for the stormwater runoff. To be clear, this is, you will manage the stormwater onsite, some sort of collecting tank or infiltration onsite?
Okay, so you're talking about the planting bed one? Just want to make sure I'm addressing the correct one.
Letter C. Inlets are provided at low spots along the curve, which pipe the stormwater runoff to the proposed underground stormwater facility.
Correct. Your ordinance requires us to have planting beds, which typically from a parking lot, it would sheet flow over right into the grass into a low area. We have curbing. Curbing captures the water that directs it into an inlet, which is a grate on the ground, goes down into the inlet through a storm pipe. We have a large underground basin right here which would manage all the stormwater management on the site. It takes it underground, it slows it up, it cools it off, and then releases it at a much lower rate to the pipe already in Century Drive.
So it then does connect into our stormwater system after going through that process?
Correct. Yeah. Today, the water just runs off pretty much freely. It discharges into this neighbor's property and goes across the property. We're capturing it, piping it right to the road, and taking it right into the pipe where it would normally get anyway after it goes through the neighbor's property. We're capturing it and taking it right to the pipe. But it already gets there today.
And I guess I'll direct my next question then to Director Powell or Manager Davis. For this kind of a setup where a private entity is managing their end of the stormwater, but then it's tapping into ours, how does that go as far as, do we do inspections for that? Or how do we ensure maintenance and flow of that?
You're making me pull from my past lifetime. Certainly, I don't know, I don't know what the requirements are for that, but I do know that in order for them to tap into that, they have to be able to prove that they can't, they're not oversizing our system, if I'm correct. So, that has to be done as it's submitted to, I'm sure, DEP or the county. I don't know which agency. But, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. Mike's here. I didn't even see Mike.
Good evening. So with respect to the overall stormwater system, just like any other development, there's an operation maintenance agreement. So under that agreement, the property owners are responsible. They're also responsible for making sure that required annual inspections are done. They have two methods for your ordinance to select. One, the township performs. Two, the property owner performs and furnishes, report to the township. It's part of your MS four. So it's all controlled by what's in place in your ordinances and what's recorded as far as operation maintenance on the plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Did you want to...
Actually, my other question on the waivers was already asked, and I'll hold off on my other questions, I think, until we get further down the line, because they don't have to do with the waivers.
I did think of something. Your planning commission did ask for an additional crosswalk to the site, which we did provide. I should have stated that in my introduction. Just a little bit more freedom for people to safely enter the Wawa from the parking lot.
Yeah, I did want to say actually, thank you for considering that and adding it to the plan, because, you know, even with, even with a, you know, a car-centric development like this, you know, ultimately, humans are still ultimately using the property, so ensuring that everybody can access it safely is greatly appreciated. I had a question. I'm recalling from, I think this is two months ago now, a, or a month, whatever it was, discussion about the adjacent full-turn access and looking at, looking at those numbers again with the township's traffic engineer. Am I recalling that correctly, Director Sweeney? Has that occurred and am I recalling that that was going to be done correctly? Or is, I wasn't sure what the status of that was? Thank you, Mike. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
So I believe you're referring to during the planning commission meeting, the reference, where the other leg of this road comes out. The original study was looking at whether that needed to be restricted or not. And as part of that, a gap analysis had been completed. The township's traffic consultant Bowman has reviewed that and is in agreement with the gap study that was performed. So that existing access for the other site that you're referencing would remain the same.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I was just wondering if you could touch a little bit on your stormwater system. I know this is underlaid by karst geology.
Correct.
And so I'm sure that has driven you a little bit as to what you were going to do with the stormwater.
Yeah, correct. We have an underground system that's stone and the... Sure. Stone and half pipes that sits, we have a liner, impermeable liner, so you don't want the water to get into the ground. Again, we capture the water. It sits in there. It's released at a very, very slow rate. So it's cooled off, it's cleaned, and then released back into the system at a much lower rate than it would typically be just discharging off the site.
Oh my gosh, how do I keep doing this? Every time I zoom, it switches, it doesn't, it switches the page. I think I just... Yeah, that's the stormwater basin detail right there in the cross-sections. And if you go back one, there should be one.
So that would be the footprint of our underground basin. There is a cross-section of it. As you can see, you see the half pipes. The liner is under it. The water does not pass through an impermeable liner. And then we have the stone, and then of course above that, you have the asphalt of the parking lot. So all of the impervious from the site is captured and sent to this system. And then again, through the same verbiage is, it's slowed down and released at a slower rate. Thank you. No problem.
Okay, are there any other questions from the...
If there's no further discussion, Madam President, I would go ahead and start moving for the waivers. First, I would move that we waive the requirements of Section one ninety-two dash thirty-five A-two submission of a preliminary plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Malone. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
I move that we waive the requirements of Section one ninety-two dash fifty-eight, C-five, A. Street trees along the frontage of Century Drive conditioned on applicant's consideration of denser placement of street trees where feasible and other planting options.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz and a second from Commissioner Malone. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
I move that we waive Section one ninety-two dash fifty-eight, E-ten, parking lot planting island be designed to collect stormwater.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Malone. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
I move that we waive the requirements of Section one ninety-two dash fifty-nine, C-two. Parking spaces adjacent to planting islands be two feet wider.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Malone. Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
And I move that we waive the requirements of Section one eighty-four dash fourteen A-one. No increase in post-development total stormwater runoff volume.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Malone. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
And finally, Madam President, I move that we approve SLD number two thousand twenty-five dash oh-three, Wawa store number eighty-two fifty-six preliminary final subdivision, preliminary final land development plan with the following conditions. A, satisfy all remaining comments listed on Ratu's letter dated August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, and B, satisfy all remaining comments listed on Cumberland County Planning Department's letter dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Second, and Madam President, I have a question, maybe a comment. Director Hall, I mean, I think I've asked this on all of these plans, these bigger redevelopment plans that are coming through. And folks, thank you for, you know, working with staff and getting, you know, things organized. We have the utmost confidence in our staff here in Lower Allen that they're going to bring us information and good stuff. So if it's showing up here tonight, we're really confident, but I feel like I want to ask a couple of these questions. Director Hall, you know, when we had the other modernized gas station finally come into the Lower Allen well overdue, you know, we had some public, you know, speaking out about that, and there was a lot of clarification done that, no pun intended, paved the way here a little bit for more modern gas fuel stations coming into the township, so I'm glad for that. But from a public safety standpoint, I'm sure you may be aware, you know, if there's going to be alcohol sold in the store perhaps. I don't know if that's the case. But from the public safety standpoint, as you reviewed this, do you feel, you know, the public safety disciplines are going to, you know, be okay, you know, in the forecasting of, you know, this new traffic that's going to be coming in there and also being a destination for more people in the township that don't necessarily live here stop on their way to and from work and maybe even just coming to a Wawa from out of town?
Yeah, we've not had, we've not had any significant issues with the existing facilities. And we talked about the second one, you know, up the street, and we don't anticipate anything there either. So I, you know, from what I'm looking at and from what I've seen, you know, I don't think there's going to be any problems. And I don't know, are you going to have alcohol or not?
Possibly.
Yeah, so, and so we actually have one, another vendor that does, another store. And, you know, every place has its issues, but the one benefit we have, and I don't hope, think it'd be any different here, is we work very closely with those folks. And I'm sure the same thing will be true with Wawa.
Correct.
And as you know, Director, my question comes in the context of down the road, you know, the public safety services that we have to provide and making sure we can stay up with that. So, thank you for keeping up with it.
Sure. You're welcome.
That's all I had, Madam.
Madam President, sorry. There was one question that Commissioner Malone's discussion and questions sort of brought to mind. And I don't, I don't think it came up earlier, so I wanted to highlight it. There was information that we received about lighting on the site. And, you know, since there were concerns expressed at the planning commission about light pollution, I was wondering if, I know that we received it from Manager Davis. I wasn't sure who would want to address that just to sort of highlight what we found, just so we can sort of put that on the record, if that's all right.
Sure.
Thank you.
Are you looking for the township to respond or me from the developer's side? Because I can address.
If that would be, that would be great, yeah.
We have zero spillover light along the property lines. And as I said at the planning commission meeting, that doesn't mean if you were across the street and you look into our site, you're not going to see a light. But all of our lights, our shoeboxes that direct the light down to the ground, so it's not shining off to the signs. Our store sign, which is a Wawa sign that you see with the gas prices, is east to west. The people that were asking the questions are south. So when they're looking across the street, they're going to see the side of our sign. They're not going to see the illuminated portions of it.
Okay.
That's the lighting on the site.
All right. And the additional information that we received, that was essentially confirming that the lighting is going to essentially minimize any seepage into surrounding areas.
Right, there's no seepage onto the adjacent properties. It's zero at the property lines.
Great. Thank you very much.
Like I said, you will, if you look, just like a flashlight, if someone has a flashlight, you'll see it, but it's not bright in your eyes because it's shot at the ground.
All right. Well, thank you again for that additional information. Well, thank you again for that additional information and that reassurance for, for us and our residents.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks for closing the loop on that point. I appreciate it. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz and a second from Commissioner Balaun on the table. Are there any further questions or comments about this? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And thank you very much for your presentation and for attending tonight.
Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your summer.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing that there's no agenda items under Public Works, we'll move to Finance and turn it over to Director Knoll.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item on the agenda that I have is for discussion of possible action, approving of the Westshore Recreation Commission's 2026 budget and Lower Allen's per capita rate being increased from $3.20 this year to $3.30. It's basically an increase of $1,727.20 to the budget.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Commissioners about this increase?
Madam President, if there's no further discussion, I would make the motion to approve the Westshore Recreation Commission's 2026 budget and Lower Allen's per capita rate of $3.30, a 10 cent increase per capita over last year.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Brown. Any questions or comments?
Madam President, I would just like to again say, every year when we talk about the Westshore Rec and of course the Frederickson Library as well, kind of partners in our area for services that we don't provide directly, the value that we get from the Westshore Rec is just tremendous. And so our residents are well served, especially in the opportunity side. Whether it's fully utilized or not, it's, it's hard to say. But from the opportunity side, I'm so grateful that the Westshore Rec continues to offer these programs at such a great value. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Balaun. I, I would like to echo those comments and just say that I, I find great value in the Recreation Commission programs. I think they're very well run and I'm glad that the board is taking action to approve this increase. So we have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Brown. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, and your next item?
The next item on the agenda is the fund balance policy. We took a look, the fund balance policy is from 2005, so it's about 20 years old. So in helping to do the, the budgeting, I enclosed a memo just highlighting what the changes were from the 2005 resolution to the 2025 resolution that I'm proposing for the changes and the updates with the fund balance policy for Lower Allen Township.
Okay. So as you mentioned, we had a memo in the, in our pocket, so were you going to say something else?
I just, it, it's open for discussion. I was looking for any action just to see if there was any discussion. We discussed it at the Finance Committee. So we have vetted out some of these items, but now it's being presented to the board for any type of open discussion or questions.
Okay. Thank you, Director. We appreciate your work in bringing this to us for discussion. And I'll open it up to the board if there's anything they'd like to discuss or ask.
Director Knoll, does the, the, so I, I like the range. And I, I think it was, you know, well thought out and then vetted out, I'm, I'm certain of that. And then, so that 15 to 30 percent, and I like the consequences that happen if we have to make, take action as a board to do something different in there. I like the language, it's pretty clear. I'm sure there will always be some ambiguity that we'll be counting on the solicitor, there are other boards down the road perhaps, we count on the solicitor to hash out. But I am curious to know, when, when you get to the, the 30 percent mark, is that inclusive? Like in the past, we've, we've talked about, well, we should keep X amount of dollars for perhaps a recession and keep X amount of dollars for this. Is this an inclusive number, a range of everything that we would just have as a, as a fund balance in cash?
It's, this would be what you would strive to keep against the expenditures you have each budgeted year. So 30 percent would be the maximum that you would keep against what the budgeted expenditures are.
Not, not saying if you got to 30 percent, well, that doesn't account for the, you want to keep, this, I'm just using a, just a wild number, $2 million in case there's a recession in addition to that. This is in total.
This is in total.
In total, okay.
If you wanted that, we could do it as a restricted
I do not.
Fund balance.
I, I really like things just to be crystal clear and
Right.
in total and well thought out, which is, this clearly has been and, and talked about. So I appreciate that you're clarifying that, that this is going to be what we would work towards and, and maintain.
Yes, yeah. Otherwise, if we designate, then it would be restricted to that usage, so.
Thank you. That was the only question I had.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I, I just wanted to highlight, I really appreciate item number three, where we'll be getting an estimate of any surplus or deficit, like through the budget process, and we'll be able to figure out what to do with that or about it in the coming year. I think that will be very helpful and I think it will keep everybody on the same page as well. So, thank you. I, this is something I've been talking about since 2021. I think a lot of you know. So, yeah, I'm very happy with this. Thank you, Director.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, it's being on the Finance Committee, thank you to Director Knoll. And, you know, one of the things that we looked at within these tolerances is kind of, I don't want to say we've flat out committed, but I think all of us have seen the presentation on the, on the roads and, and what we're going to have to spend in the upcoming years in order to get our roads up and develop the maintenance plan. And in doing so, I think that's going to bring us to the 30 percent number kind of. And so I think we'll be in great shape moving forward with everything. So thank you for, for everything and your explanations and taking a little extra time with me to get me comfortable with everything. So thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Yes, likewise, as serving on the Finance Committee too, I, I do appreciate all the extra time you took to educate us on, you know, the changes that were being made and the rationale behind them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. All right. Well, thank you again for your efforts on this. And I assume we'll be at an upcoming meeting for possible action then.
Yes, yes. I'll just make sure with, with the Solicitor Minor that everything looks good and then I'll present it at the next board meeting for adoption.
Okay. Okay. With that, we'll turn it over to Manager Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Ben or Nate, do you mind bringing up Property Mapper? It would help the board understand this next agenda item that I have with respect to possible vacation of a portion of Gettysburg Road. So you're going to want to go to where the Dairy Farmers is?
It's like, it's already on the screen there.
Not, not where Dairy Farmers is. Yep, you have to scroll up.
Are you okay with Google Street either?
Yes, Google Street is fine. The, the other way. It, it will work. I was hopeful to show the history of Property Mapper because it shows when Gettysburg Road connected to
How far do you want it to go?
That's fine. We'll just go with that. So, thank you. Appreciate it. So this next item I have for discussion and possible action, Commissioners, this is to authorize staff to advertise a public hearing for September 22nd, 2025 at 5:30 PM to consider the enactment of ordinance 202505. This would be a, to amend the official map of Lower Allen Township by vacating a portion of street known as Gettysburg Road. Why I wanted the map to be brought up is so the board, this was a 20-year project in the making, so Old Gettysburg Road, a portion of it was vacated. And Century Drive, which you can see to the left of that clearing or wooded area, was constructed and a best management, stormwater best management practice was put in to the section that we're discussing. So there's a small stub of, of Gettysburg Road that is left next to the Dairy Farmers and it dead ends at the Dairy Farmers facility. We have been approached, and this is permissible by the first class township code, by the owner of the property to vacate this portion. I'll let Solicitor Minor speak to the legal ramifications and how this process goes, but I just wanted to share with the board that this road has been problematic for plowing with the dead end. We used to be able to go the whole way through. That's why I wanted you to see, if you would have seen the other, it shows, the other Property Mapper, it shows that it would go the whole way to Gettysburg, or Wesley, excuse me. Now that it's dead end, it does become a maintenance issue for our staff when we plow in the winter. So the developer has, owner, excuse me, has offered to maintain all easements for sewer and stormwater authority, and Solicitor Minor can speak to that.
Actually, do you mind just showing us where that is at the point?
Yeah, thanks.
To make sure that that's exactly.
Thank you, Mike.
And then which property number?
So it's this portion, where the cursor is gone?
And it stops. Mike can show you where, yep.
Stops right there.
Thank you, Mike. It used to go the entire way to Wesley. Yep.
All right. This is, and really I think the manager did a great job of already describing it for you. This was a long project and sort of unique cooperation between Upper Allen and Lower Allen to build Century Drive. And really, it mitigated a lot of flooding on Gettysburg Road. The road was frequently closed. As the managers indicated, Gettysburg Road, at least in that section, has no utility to the township. The first class township code plus all the other municipal codes that I'm aware of have a procedure to vacate roads. You can also open roads. But in this case, you vacate roads. And in this case, the petitioners own 100% of the property on both sides. So there's, at this point, there wouldn't be any objectors because the partnership that has the coffee is going along with the, the partnership that has the, the, the milk. So you get cappuccino or whatever, but anyway, the, the people that take over the, the old, you know, bottling facility for, for soda now make those sorts of products and they're very successful. But what they've requested that the Commissioners to do is, is go through this process to vacate the, the, that small amount of street back to the, to them because it really isn't needed by the township anymore. And they, they did reserve, allow reservation of easements for access for the township for stormwater purposes and the sewer authority for sanitary sewer purposes. So I think the, the interests of Lower Allen and its various entities are protected. So, you know, it's up to you to, to decide what you want to do. They are entitled to their, to their day in court under the, the code. So they're going to present, and I'm suggesting September 22nd and a little earlier if that suits the board, just so we have a clean record. We will have to have court reporter because you will have a, 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 a record for appeal if you say no. And again, it's really up to you and I don't know if there's any appealable issues or not. But the, the Director of Community Development and I have worked with these people for a year or so. I'm, I'm, it's taken a long time to get where we are and for a lot of reasons that really did involve the staff. And just, you know, multiple people, you know, contact folks changing. So I'm kind of glad that we've come to this point. And they are covering the costs of the, of this procedure, which are considerable. So if there's any other questions, I'll try to answer them, but.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for either Solicitor Minor or Manager Davis on these?
I don't think that's how you make a cappuccino, is it?
No, I, I take my pop, pop that.
I was, I, I, I understood the, the pack, the information in the packet here. I was curious whether North American Coffee Partnership is, whether we have any information about them planning to develop that lot? That, that was the first time that I learned that they owned it.
I'll let Isaac Sweeney answer that question.
So they had originally approached us and that entire wooded area was going to actually be a parking lot for their trucks. They have indicated to us that they are completely doing away with that because they just like the separation from the main road, excuse me. They like the trees. So at this point, there are no plans to develop that any further at this, right now. Can't say that anything's going to change in the future, but at this point, there are no plans to, to develop it.
Okay. That was all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Balaun?
Thank you. Either Manager Davis or perhaps you'd prefer me to, Director Powell, the, the, if you can bring the maps or the picture back up, the mapper. The, Manager Davis, you had said, you know, of course, our, it makes total sense, our snowplows or any other vehicles go down their dead end, it becomes a problem. So what will they do now? Will they just, is the plan just kind of go around like a little cul-de-sac and out?
I'm not sure.
With a, like the, you said the snowp
Well, they'll be responsible to plow their
No, 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 no. I mean, what, what will happen once that we don't have that?
Oh, we won't even go up. We will just continue to plow Century Drive.
You're just, okay, so Century just continues?
Well, Century ends and that's Autobahn, I think. Excuse me. Mm-hmm.
And then just turn around and go back out?
Yep.
I got it. Opposed, make in the left there and out?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yep, got it. I just wondered. Thank you.
Yep. Just to share as well, Solicitor Minor worked with, with Dairy Farmers on the discussions with staff because we have to maintain that best management practice in there. After this was, this project was complete, we have responsibility for maintenance for that BMP. We have all the easements obtained, secured to have access in there for staff as well as the sewer authority. They have an easement. That has all been secured.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to authorize staff to advertise for the public hearing. And I guess we just want to confirm that the 5:30 time suits the Commissioners. Sounds like it does. So we'd be looking for a motion on this then.
Madam President, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize staff to advertise a public hearing for September 22nd, 2025 at 5:30 PM to consider the enactment of ordinance 202505, amending the official map of Lower Allen Township by vacating a portion of a street known as Gettysburg Road.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Balaun and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you for all your efforts, Solicitor and Manager Davis. Appreciate them.
Thank you. Next item would be 13B. This is for discussion of possible action for the Commissioners this evening. This would be to authorize staff to engage with Hometown Press for the publication and printing of our township newsletter at no cost. The township would incur the cost of postage for the newsletters to be mailed to homes and businesses. I've included a memorandum in your packet explaining the process, the research I've went through, met with staff from Hometown Press to determine if this could be feasible for Lower Allen Township. One of the goals I have is to reach more residents in our community. We, the newsletter had, we, for some time, we have not nailed that to all residents in our township. I would like to change that. As you can see with the cost comparison, we even come in under the amount that we were spending just to do our EMS mailer alone to print the, to print and mail this quarterly for the year, reach just shy of 10,000 residents. They have a, a process that they use for all the residential, residential addresses. They've obtained them through every door direct mailing with all zip codes and mailing routes. So it's just shy of 10,000. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have, but my goal would be to move forward with utilizing Hometown Press. be to move forward with utilizing Hometown Press. They do print right now for Lemoine Borough, Silver Spring, Hampton, several municipalities in our area. Their product is very nice, and I'd like to reach more of our residential community, and also help offset the cost of the businesses could advertise as well in our community.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any questions on this item?
I'd just say I can't recommend this enough. I know we've discussed, you know, we use Facebook, and, you know, can't guarantee that everyone sees that, and obviously, we don't always have a great attendance at our meetings, unfortunately, so this is a way for residents to stay up to date with what's going on, and is a positive way to reach out to them. So I appreciate looking into this, and I think it's a tremendous idea. And in the end, it ends up saving money by communicating with our residents better. So it's truly a win-win.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments. I think this is a great idea, and, you know, any chance to, you know, obviously save money and do things more efficiently is greatly appreciated by everybody. I had a couple of small questions about logistically how this would work, especially if, well, my first question was, would the advertisements be strictly limited to businesses, or would there be, say, like, political ads that could appear in our newsletter through this?
I don't know that they've had political ads in the past. I think they limit it to the businesses in our community.
Okay. All right. So it is generally limited to business. Okay. And I was curious whether there are terms or policies put in place to basically ensure appropriate content within the newsletter. You know, they're not.
Oh, you mean the advertisements?
Yes. That's, well, if the advertisements are in the newsletter, essentially, then it's, that's the, that's what I'm concerned about, is, you know, potential association with things that residents might, you know, find objectionable, regardless of whether I do or anybody does, you know?
I can tell you, we get a, we receive approval prior to printing, so we would be able to review and ensure that it would not be offensive to any of our residential community, but township staff would be doing that.
Say over the ad.
Yep, we do.
We do, under this program. Okay, all right.
And the cursory, Hampton uses them, reviewing theirs. It was pretty generic advertisers, Penn State Health, a couple of well-known restaurants in their community.
Realtors, restaurants.
Very generic type.
Retail shops.
That sort of stuff is typically fine. You know, there's, you know, I think we could all think of, like, one example that might be different among all of us.
Yes, I think I, I see where you're going, and.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, for me, for me, it would be, frankly, tobacco retailers. I would not like seeing that, you know, supporting our newsletter. But I don't think that that's the first thing that most people would find objectionable, frankly. So, anyway, I really appreciate the effort that you've got, that you all have put into this, and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing more from it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Schwartz, I agree, and you bring up some really great points. I will say that when this has come up, and this isn't the first time this has ever come up, okay? We didn't get to this point with it in the past, but we are here now, and this is great. I love the idea, and anyone in municipal government that I've talked to that deals with this on the elected side have always had kudos to say, and that about this type of practice. And so I think that the problems, I've never heard one come out in the several years that I've contemplated, you know, because, and I think that we're in good shape from that standpoint, that the organization itself has probably a habit of dealing with just upstanding content, we'll say, or at least trying to do their best to filter it.
I think they have some internal controls.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
If no other discussion, Madam President, I would make a motion to authorize manager and staff to engage with Hometown Press for the publication and printing of the Township newsletter at no cost. Township would then incur a cost of postage for newsletters to be mailed to homes and businesses.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Nagy, a second from Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and thank you again to Manager Davis for bringing this before us.
Thank you, thank you. Madam President, the next two items, more of a housekeeping issues, but wanted to bring to your attention and the board's attention our advertised budget meeting dates. They are originally October 6th, 20th, and November 3rd. Director Noel is out of town on October 6th, so I don't think we will be conducting that meeting unless we want to have a workshop-type of meeting. I think we would be fine to have the budget meeting on the 20th. We'd be prepared to present to the Commissioners, and if we need November 3rd as a backup, we can also save that. The 6th is advertised, but like I said, Director Noel, I'd like her to be here and involved, so she's going to be running the majority of the show.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to bring that to your attention this evening. And then trick-or-treat, I would like to get this on the agenda. We've had, always have some residents asking, so I think it's important for us to announce that our date is, in Lower Allen Township, is Thursday, October 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So I'd just like to announce that at a public meeting, so everyone's aware of that. We'll have it on our website and our Facebook and advertised, but just wanted to bring that to the board's attention tonight, and that's all I have.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, and before we head into Commissioner Reports, I'll just ask if there's any Directors, Captains, or staff that have anything to say for the order this evening? Okay. So with that, we'll turn to Commissioner Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I wanted to thank Director Hall for the work on the amendments to the smoke-free policy. I really appreciate it, and thank you for indulging my suggestions, and sorry for not getting them to everybody ahead of time. I wanted to update folks a little bit about the most recent Planning Commission meeting, which you might recall involved the proposed development at Liberty Forge. There's, it was an interesting presentation, and, you know, ultimately, I think it's going to, you know, potentially make a, you know, a nice prosperous development in there. Ultimately, the plan was tabled to next meeting. There were, you know, a lot of waivers and comments outstanding that the Planning Commission wanted the applicant and staff to continue working on, and, you know, a lot of comments from residents concerned about increased traffic along Lisbon Road in that area, and, you know, potential traffic hazards associated with bringing a community of 193 households into that intersection right there. So, you know, I'm confident in staff's efforts to work with the applicant, obviously, and looking forward to the next meeting to see how it's coming. So I believe that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple things. I'd like to thank the manager and the directors who got back to me quickly, as you do in the last two weeks, with a couple of things that I asked about. And Manager Davis, particularly for you, you know, if I call, I'm a caller, not a texter as much, or an emailer, but if you're in a meeting, you just quickly say, "I'll get back to you." And I try to say usually, "Please don't rush," because, you know, often it's not an urgent matter, but you do this really fine job of making me feel like it's important enough to get back to me right away, and I really appreciate the time you put in and the effort for that, because it means a lot. And so if I'm experiencing that, I'm sure that our leadership here is having a really good experience. And so, thank you. And I'd just like to thank the people involved with Finance right now. I mean, this is some great stuff going on. And Director Noel, I know you're kind of leading the pack, and Julie, you're our recording secretary tonight, but it's so great to have you back there. And I just, so confident, and Vice President Nagy, and President Karen, and of course, Commissioner Brown's on the Finance Committee itself. But I hear, when I do ask questions or I'm calling and we're talking, having a conversation with the manager, I am, she's mentioning everybody's names. So-and-so came in and commented, "The engagement is incredible and welcomed," and that's the sense I'm getting. And so I'm really grateful for all of that. And with that, that's it I have tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Oh, yeah. Congratulations again to Corporal Shiley on his promotion tonight. Also, just a reminder to anybody listening at home and everybody that tomorrow is the first day of school for Westshore School Districts. Use extra caution. I am very happy that we have entered the partnership with Westshore Schools and the bus system to have that camera system now that anybody that passes a bus will be penalized heavily. So if you know anybody, tell them, "Don't pass a bus, because you're going to pay." And that makes me happy, because I've known of a couple close calls, and, you know, children are our greatest resources here in our township, so let's do a weekend to protect them. And also, the last month's Sewer Authority meeting was canceled due to not being able to form a quorum, but I believe at the next meeting, Director Noel, you'll be there to go over new, much-needed, updated contracts regarding some things there. Is that correct?
I will be at the Stormwater Authority to go over items. I did give Brian the management agreement, so he's taking it to his Finance Committee that they formed. If he wants me there, I will definitely be there, but as far as I know right now, he doesn't need me. But I could certainly be there if he needed to.
Well, thank you for all your work on that. It's, the previous management agreement is 20 years old?
Yes, 23 years old, actually.
It's long overdue for an update, so I'll keep everybody posted as to how that goes. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Vice President Nagy?
Nothing other than just to congratulate Corporal Shiley on his promotion, and Mary Ellen for her retirement.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I just want to say, I think in the last six months of this year, or guess since the beginning of 2025, I just want to note that we've just seen such great initiatives being taken by our manager and our directors, and I just want to say thank you. I think they're all very positive initiatives that are really serving our residents very well, and I just want to point that out and say thank you for that. Also, I want to echo what Commissioner Brown said. Good luck to everyone starting school tomorrow. And also want to add, September, there is a CAPCOG annual meeting and picnic. I think some of the invites will be coming out for that, but hopefully, we generally have a good representation of Lower Allen at those, at that event, and I look forward to attending on behalf of the township. My understanding is that there's no action coming from executive session, so at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for attending tonight, and I hope you have a good week ahead. Good night. Oh, I didn't announce the reasons for executive session.
Sorry.
I didn't say the reasons for executive session. How do I do that? We're adjourning the meeting to cover one item, which is a personnel matter in executive-